You are watching XS Laporte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 12, 2023 meeting of the Michigan Ashores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
I will ask everyone to stand to recite the pledge. We're calling this meeting to order. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, Joan, please do the roll call.
Present.
Present.
Michael Martinez.
Absent.
He's not here. Ralph Box from San Paxton. Rich Jones, a maybe. I'm here.
Okay.
Attorney Brad Adamski.
It said he was going to join us via Zoom?
He has not yet.
Okay, alright.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Swistick.
Present.
Park Board President Jane Paxton.
Is she on Zoom?
No.
No, okay.
She's absent.
Okay.
BZA President Matt Bowen, I know he's absent. And Building Commissioner and Police Enforcement Officer Deb Chubb.
Just notified me that she's running late after another meeting. School Board.
Floodplain Administrator.
Absent.
Um, Bre.
Absent.
And Plan Commission President Ralph Box, if you can make it twice, we know you're here. Website Samantha Arnold.
Present.
Okay, and Road Commissioner Bob Sokowski.
Present.
Okay, thank you Joan. I sent an agenda out the other day to everyone. I did not make any corrections online yet or make a new document, so if anybody has any kind of questions or comments, please add them. Let me know what those are now. Council members?
I don't have any changes or additions to my people.
Okay. Sam?
No.
Okay. We'll, just to mention, under the miscellaneous business, perhaps do we do any kind of discussion about the refuse fee? Are there, or we could put that off? We have another meeting at the end of the month, too.
Where did you have that?
I didn't have it anywhere. It was just a suggestion. I'm asking the council members.
I think we should discuss it in case more effort is required before we.
Okay, alright, so I'm adding that under miscellaneous business. Okay? Alright, yes, and Joan, you were saying about adding something?
Yeah, somewhere along the line. I had some ordinances that I sent out to you.
Yes.
And I don't believe they're all in here. Or it's a resolution. Trying to find mine, I don't know what I did with mine.
You sent us three on the first sending, and then you added a fourth one, I believe.
That's interesting. I spent hours copying in order to do them.
You sent a resolution 2023-09, but because we don't have Attorney Adamski together with us in order to review it, because I wanted to do it, we will put this off until the final meeting of the year. I did not add it to the agenda.
Which was that one?
2023-09. It was, you sent it out together with the others in a second email?
What was before?
And that one was with regards to the Maple City?
Maple Cityville?
Yes, the part of the Maple Cityville. So that will be put onto the final meeting of the year, whenever we decide on the date.
Yeah, because I can't pay it till we get them. I checked with SBOA and they said to be sure it's documented.
Okay. Alright, so, and decide which the number on it, I think we'll have to discuss, must be off, because you have a resolution here of 2023-07, and then this one jumps to nine, so I don't know what the eighth resolution would be.
So there was a resolution you sent us, 2308?
And what was that one?
Additional appropriations.
Resolution, I'm sorry. It's a resolution, it's supposed to be a resolution.
That's the transfer.
Okay, that's 2023-07, but we're missing 2023-08, because you gave this one the number of 08.
07 is the salary.
Right.
That's an ordinance. There's two ordinances in a resolution.
There's two resolutions.
The second resolution was the one for the Maple City? Or is there another one that's 208?
There's three resolutions.
Oh, there are three resolutions, okay. What is the?
Seven is a transfer of funds.
Okay, yes, I have that. What's 08?
And 08 is also a transfer.
Okay. Right, did I not see that one? Okay.
That's right.
The Maple City was the 09, I think.
Correct.
But that one won't be on the agenda. Okay, alright, so we have an additional, it's not listed here, but it's the other resolution, 2023-08 is added to the agenda. Any other additions or corrections, amendments to the agenda? No? Okay, thank you very much. Then let, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the modification.
Okay, Ralph Box has moved to approve the agenda with the modifications. I need a second.
Second.
Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, two absent. Okay, thank you very much. Let us move on to the minutes. Oh, here, we needed an addition because I did not include the executive sessions notes, but that I do not believe needs to be approved at a meeting, correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I thought Mr. Bunning had told us it didn't need to be approved, because it was a memorandum, but we will add that to our list.
You do need to do, how are you going to do this, one for the budget approval, because Rich Young and Ralph and you were the only ones here. But I understood that all they have to do is show that the meeting, I mean, anyone can vote on it, just show that it has been done.
Okay, well, that will be later on then, for the salary ordinance, correct? Where you're talking about the minutes for this.
Talking about the meeting about October 17th, that last month, you decided not to approve it because Rich Young wasn't here.
Correct, well, he's not here today anyway, but, so we need to have enough of those who are present to actually vote, to approve the minutes, because the others wouldn't know. So who was here at the October?
I understood the minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, who was present at the October meeting then?
You.
Okay.
Rich Young.
And Ralph.
And Ralph. But I had understood it didn't make any difference whether they were at the meeting or not. Anybody could vote.
We have been.
Because it shows that I presented it.
Well, we have been working in the past, waiting to make sure that we had those who are attending in order to approve the minutes, so we'll keep following that same precedent.
Recording in progress.
Okay, anybody join us yet? Have you looked? No? Okay, alright, so let's move on to the minutes.
Council Executive Meeting.
Okay.
November 20.
Yep. Council members?
No.
Okay, if not, then I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Executive Meeting, Council Member.
Okay.
I will second that.
Alright, Sam Paxton moves. Ralph Box, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The ayes have it, two absent.
Aye.
Okay, let us move on to approving the minutes for November 14, the town council Have you had a chance to read through the minutes?
Yes.
Alright, Sam?
Yes.
Any comments, corrections, questions?
No.
No.
No? If there are no questions or no comments on the minutes of the November 14 meeting, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the town council meetings, November 14.
I will second that motion.
Alright, so Sam Paxton moves to approve. Ralph Box, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, two absent. Alright, thank you, the minutes have been approved. Okay, let us move on to, thank you, let us move on to the reports from the clerk treasurer,
All of you received the additional vouchers today. I will read them. Chase Card Services for postage, for certified mail for delinquent account, $9.22. Lowe's Business, $14.21 for some WD-40 for the garage. Jacob Jones Auto, $171.46 for repairing the headlamp. I don't know, on a 1996 Ford truck. AT&amp;T Mobility cellphone, $81.09. Chase Card Services, has a whole list of them here. Web domain, $14.99. For protection is $14.99, the actual domain is $20.99. Microsoft Soft, $9. Adobe Software, $21.39. Another Microsoft, $4. And another Microsoft for $12. And Brad Adamski for legal, $35. Monthly retainer, $625. Cummins email, $105. And email receipt, review of documents, $210. Monthly retainer for October, $625. And various town issues, phone call with Dyna Dumbries, $105. Nipco Street Lights, $20.64. Garage lights, $78.77. For a total of $2,162.76.
Questions from the council members?
No.
Sam, you good? Alright, then I need a motion to approve these vouchers as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ralph Box moves to approve.
Second.
Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, three ayes, two absent, and the vouchers have been approved.
Okay, and let's move on to the November 30 payroll vouchers. This is for Deb Chubb, $339.70. And I don't put this on the email or on the internet, so you can go ahead and read
Alright gentlemen, here's one for you to check. Oops, sorry. Check that out. Once it's passed, you can start signing, okay?
So these the same thing?
Yes, they are, for the two of you to look at, and then once they're approved. Okay. Any questions? Nothing, then I need a motion to approve.
I thought we did. Is this different?
No, that was the one that, this is the second one here.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 30 payroll vouchers for Deb Chubb.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Ralph moved, Sam seconded. Okay Joan, go ahead. Okay, that's.
Next is on the vouchers for up to December 12. Town of Long Beach for police protection, $5,174. Volunteer Fire Department for rent, $105. Department of Water Works, $9.36 for Kincaid Park. Republic Services, $4,659.72 for the refuse. Comcast, $174.30. Brenda, $33.75 for travel. Maple City Tree, $2,000. I will not pay this until we get the ordinance, I mean, the resolution signed, so it'll stay in advance. I'll have to give them a call and let them know that it wasn't signed tonight. Bradley Adamski, $625 status for the December retainer. Ended up with an additional retainer. Bradley, I'm sorry, Friedman, on the Gobelny case, $1,647.50. Fire Protection, $36, I wish, $3,638.16. Butler Fairman Soufert, engineering with MS Board, stormwater permit, $2,020. Department of Water Works for water at the garage, $9.36 for a grand total of $20,541.15.
Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve those expenses, except for the $2,000 that would be deferred until the next discussion.
Okay, thank you. Sam Paxton?
Second.
Alright, so Ralph Box has moved to approve, except for the paying of the $2,000. Sam Paxton has seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, two absent. Okay, thank you. Joan, I don't know if you noticed that Deb joined our meeting some time ago?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, she came in just a couple minutes after we started. Okay, is there anything else from the clerk treasurer, or is that it now? Joan?
I missed something. What did you miss?
You sent us three separate, different vouchers. Is there something else, another one?
No, there is not another voucher.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you meant, did I have anything else?
No, no, thank you. And then I'm going to ask, there's a little bit of chatter in the back of the room, and I understand that when the recordings have to go on, they actually interfere with the recording, and then you hear mumbling in the back, so I'll ask to refrain from speaking in the back of the room, boys. Uh huh.
We want the force of that.
Okay Joan. I know, it's like being at school. Thank you, though. Alright, here we go. Okay, let us move on then.
I'm not through.
Oh, you have another report, Joan?
Yeah, I have a report, but I am supposed to report people that request records, public records. I have a huge one from SBOA, some of the files that I sent to Gateway from 2019, 2020, 21, and one Monster in 22. I have to delete and reenter.
Okay.
I'm not fun. Then I have another one that came from Daniel Fitzgerald, who is asking for fine citations and a few other things in regards to the finance system, and I think that I sent everyone a copy of it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, yes, we've all seen that. Thank you very much, Joan. Alright.
What was the first one I remember? This one that we said, what was?
State Board of Accounts.
State Board of Accounts do audits off the reports that I put into Gateway, and something happened where 2019, 2020, and 2021 got corrupted files. And found out somebody had entered, because there's other people that can enter it through State Board of Accounts, Gateway, DLGF, so I don't know what happened in any time. But the records for the bank recs have all been corrupted.
Okay, well, that'll be a big job for you.
I know.
Unwanted, but you know, obviously necessary to do. Okay, Joan, thank you for your report. Let us go on to resolutions and ordinances. So we have for A, resolution 2023-07, rainy day transfer of funds. Okay, gentlemen, do you have that?
Can I ask, what the LOAT special distribution?
No. No, the resolution 2023-07 is a transfer of funds. In order to eliminate some of the negative balances, we have to transfer funds, and it's done through the rainy day fund.
Is that the local income tax? Is that LOAT use?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a distribution that we ended up with a negative balance. And also with the roads.
Okay, so it's transferring from the rainy day fund into these other two. Okay, thank you. So, any questions about, any other questions?
No.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then I will ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2023-07, a resolution requesting the transfer of funds from the rainy day fund to the LOAT special distribution and LRS roads and streets.
Moving.
Okay, Sam Paxton moves.
I will second that.
Okay, Ralph Box, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, three ayes, two absent. Alright, we move on to resolution number 2023-08, a resolution requesting the transfer of funds, and this one has to do with the white ditch restoration grant.
A part of it.
Or a part of it, and in order to correct the error from payments that were made in advance, it says, what is it, certain expenditures made from the town, Michigan Ashores Fund 4500, white ditch restoration grant, made in excess of available.
It's a CCG grant.
I'm reading the document that you gave.
And that's for $39,404.19. And from it, it's a community crossing grant, $8,404.19. Engineering, $25,000.
Joan, the one we're reading does not say that.
That's not the additional appropriation that, oh, wait a minute, you're talking question.
It's resolution number 2023-08.
Sorry, I was gone by.
Yeah, watch this. See, this one is on the agenda.
Ordinance 2023-08, in the agenda says additional appropriation, CCG grant.
That says ordinance 2023. You told us there's a resolution, 2023-08.
For the transfer of funds, that was the one we just did, didn't we?
No, we did 07.
Around this one.
This one, we did, this one here, you have listed as 2023-07. Okay, now, hold on, let's see, maybe attached now, these are all 2023-07. There's four copies, you know, all four signed?
Hey, Diana?
No, just signed two of them.
I mean, if you know the resolution, 2023-08, it's not on.
I understand, that's what we were discussing earlier today.
Right.
Okay?
It's not.
Yeah.
No, I haven't seen this ordinance, 23.
Resolution or ordinance?
Ordinance.
Okay.
The ordinance was on the, that's.
Ralph has it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you send that out?
I sent it out to everybody. Somewhere along the line, you should have.
Is that the one we're talking about now, the ordinance, 2023-08?
No, it's supposed to be the resolution we're talking about now.
Okay.
I will sign the sentence, I'm not going to sign that yet. Do you need to see this document, gentlemen? Joan, here's my copy, if you want, it's the 2023-08 resolution.
Oh, yeah, that one is the white ditch one. No, my copy went.
If that's not available for us to do, can we handle this at the last meeting later in the month?
I can't imagine what happened. Well, let me have a copy of it.
Of this 07? These two are 07, I just signed them.
08.
We need 08.
You're looking for 08?
Which, the one you just handed me that had the $87,000 on it?
I gave it to you. I gave you my copy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just make another copy.
Here we go. That's the 07. his wife Holly had their little boy, Alexander Paul, he was born, I'm just mixed up, I don't know if he was born Sunday night or Monday night, but a little guy came in, says he's healthy, and all of a sudden, I think that that's why Michael's not with us today, so.
Okay, resolution 2023-08, that's requesting a transfer of funds somewhere or another back in 2020, when we did the last white ditch grant fund for the trail. It was never transferred to, from the grant fund to the parks and records.
Okay.
And that was $87,417.40 for them.
Okay, so this is to correct, to make sure that the transfer was actually formally done from one account to the other. These are paid, but this is just the documentation. Correct, okay, very good. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, so, back in October, when Susan Collins.
I think you're part of that.
In October, when we had the meeting with Susan Collins, this was brought out, that there was excess surplus of funds in the park. of funds in the park account.
There's not an excess of surplus, but the funds were in the park. And somehow or another, the council and I both missed getting it transferred from the actual grant. Because we have to do grant by itself. And then we never transferred it, the money from the parks.
To White Ditch.
To White Ditch. And that does leave us pretty, pretty low for monies in the park.
Right. Okay.
So when we moved the 87,417 out of Parks to White Ditch, that offset the negative balance that you were bringing in?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And how much does that leave in the parks?
Not much.
Well, how much? Roughly?
It all depends. We are working on that right now to get some funds transferred back into it, so we're not running a deficit in the parks.
Okay. And how much did it, when it did, start getting funded?
Not very much.
How did it get up to such a high level?
Having it up that high? Because there was not much done for quite a few years. That's why the fund got up there. And now that we...
The money in there was a mistake first that we're correcting?
No, no. There was not much done. And the money that we had from tax dollars accumulated. We did very little during the pandemic. And there was, we're very conservative because we, back in 2000, beginning of 2000, late 1990s, we even had to borrow money to do some of the work on our water system. And so they've been pretty conservative since then. And so not much has been spent until recent years. And then it got spent.
Based on the normal expenditures that we have for maintenance of the parks, are we facing a deficit in 2024? Or is that...
No, that's what we're working on right now.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So if there are no other questions, then I need to get a motion to approve the transfer, to approve the resolution that transfers money from one fund to the, to the other. The paperwork for this.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Sam Paxton?
I'll second that.
Okay. Sam Paxton moved, Ralph Box seconded. Rich, I don't know. This is about correcting the White Ditch and the commu- and I'm, I'm sorry. The money that was supposed to be from the park accounts over for the White Ditch payments when we completed all the work on the trail. So, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, four ayes. Right, because Rich has joined our meeting now. Okay, great.
Rich, I think your copy is here. I don't know if you've got a copy of that.
Okay. All right.
Diana, deliver that to Florence, please.
All right. Now, let us move on then to ordinance 2023-07, which is the salary or...
Let's finish this one. On this one, it's, it's either nay or aye. Please print your name and then sign it so that we can read it, so it makes it official.
Okay, this one was which one? This is 2008? Okay, so you need the names printed as well. Just a minute, we'll make that correction.
I tried to print it and it messed it all up, so I went back, but left it alone.
All right, gentlemen, please make the correction on the, on the document we signed. Okay, this is 07, Resolution 07. Okay. Here we go. Thank you.
I think you all have, let's see, all of the ordinance, which is 2023-06.
2023-07. Is that number printed on it? 2023-07?
That's interesting.
That's a document you sent us. It says 2023-07 on the top.
Evidently, I typed the wrong number on the top.
So which ordinance number should it be?
That's a good question. I can tell you the number if I go check it. I'll go check it, read it. See, there's six or seven.
Rich, did you get it? You have a copy to look at?
What is it, 20?
Well, Joan is checking the number. It is the salary ordinance?
It's 07. 2023-07. You're right, so.
Okay.
We'll just cross this off and make it a seven. It's the same thing that was in the ordinance. We don't change a thing on it, except for, I mean, in the budget.
Any questions from the council members?
No.
Okay. All right. Then I need to have a motion to approve ordinance Number 2023-07, a continuing ordinance to authorize compensation rates and salaries for the Towne-Michiana Shores, Indiana for the calendar year 2024.
I'll make that one.
Okay. Ralph Box moves to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Sam Paxton seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, four ayes and one absent. Are you checking occasionally to see if anyone joined? Okay, thank you. Brad is not on then? No? Okay. All right. Okay, so we have moved and approved, and we will sign this for you as soon as we have the copies from you. Joan, and then, thank you. All right. And the last is the ordinance 2023-08, the additional appropriation for the CCG Roads Grant. Here we go. Ralph?
As it's...
Thank you.
So it looks okay, but I would say that the title does not have anything to do with additional appropriation, CCG Roads Grant.
The title doesn't?
No, no reference to that at all. I don't know if that's a technicality or it should have that...
It should. It helps it to identify it is in the title. So I don't have a paper copy of that one over here.
Okay. I might do somewhere. Where?
I guess the perspective I have is that a member of the public should see this. They're not going to have as many implications as the...
Yes. I agree. I think it would be a good idea, whoops, to have that.
So you could write it in and approve it. Sign it.
Okay. All right, here we go. Resolution, resolution. Let's see what this one says. Oops. Nope. That one.
Well, that one can be redone at the...
End of the year meeting? Okay. This one?
I want the notice. Make sure I have the notice.
Okay, then let's just move on. Okay, let's stop looking for that one. This one is going to be tabled until the next meeting. So ordinance 2023-08, additional appropriations for the CCG Roads Grant is being tabled and moved to the end of month meeting, end of year meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ralph, for noticing that part. Okay. In that case, we move on now to the departmental reports. I will first invite Police Chief Mark Swistak. Chief Swistak, do you want to discuss the contract now or wait until where I have it under new business?
Hi, Sam. I'll go through the monthly report for you.
Okay.
For the month of November, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 215 calls for service. When we compared 212 calls for service in the street this year for a slight increase of three calls for service. During the month of November, 12 incident reports were documented. A total of eight individuals were arrested. All the arrests were misdemeanor arrests. In summary, six misdemeanor arrests for operating a motor vehicle intoxicated, one traffic-related misdemeanor arrest for driving a motor vehicle while suspended, and a misdemeanor battery warrant arrest. Overall, it was a mild month for us with no major concerns. Specific to Towne-Michiana Shores, back on November 10th, we were dispatched to this very building here at the Towne-Michiana Shores Town Hall, where Deputy Jason Yagalski encountered an injured deer, more likely from a motor vehicle accident. We had to dispatch the deer due to physical injuries. Aside from that, if nothing else to report on the monthly report, the contract that I shared with all here earlier today expires, the previous one expires on January 31st, 2024. The new contract is again a three-year contract commencing on February 1st of 2024, running through January 31st of 2027. Within that contract, there's a 10% increase on year one, 5% increase on year two, and a 5% increase on year three. I also shared with the council the LIT funding, which is the local income tax, the additional funds that towns and cities across Leport County now receive. We at the Long Beach Police Department have given substantial pay raises to our employees in the last three years. They've received a 31% pay increase. The reason for that is to be competitive with many of the surrounding counties. We found here in Leport County, we were losing qualified law enforcement professionals to St. Joe County, Lake County, Porter County. Their pay scale was much higher than that of Leport County. We have now brought our pay metrics to a level that they're competitive with these surrounding counties. So therefore, actually, we had one of our officers who was leaving, was interviewing with Brownsburg, Indiana. And in fact, when our 25% increase took effect this year, he actually decided to stay here in the northern part of Indiana rather than going down south. So we accomplished that by giving that pay raise. Also, I shared with you the cost of vehicles. Back in 2020, we were buying vehicles, police vehicles, for $33,000. The new vehicle we just bought this year, we paid $49,660 for. That's just the base vehicle. Now including lights, sirens, everything else, all in, we had about $75,000 in the new vehicle that we just put on the road made up this year. And then also, our overtime has increased because of the pay increases, our training expenditures, cost of ammunition. Overall investigations, unfortunately, have got very costly. So I've been working to answer any questions that the council has in reference to the contract.
Thank you. Now, this information that Chief Swistak is giving us today was shared with us earlier, that, you know, we got the other letters and I sent out the little reminder about it and the contract itself. So I was wondering whether we are going to be discussing this a little bit more, because we have time. We can sign this either at the last meeting or we can sign this in January. If this is, you know, how we want to go, or we can ask any kind of questions if you've got any lined up right now. Chief Swistak is willing to answer us at any day we need, so.
No, I'm good. We, monthly, the LIT thing, is it this year or last year?
It started October 1st of 2022. Towns and cities began to receive the distribution in January.
Of this year.
And the expectation all along is that it would be distributed as in some fashion to the police.
To safety.
Police and fire.
Police and fire, yeah.
So I'm... Ah! I think we should vote on it at our next meeting at the end of December. I don't think we'd be ongoing discussion and put it out for June.
Okay.
One of the questions our town council had asked is, is the local income tax, the new increase, is going to go away? No, it's not. It's a payroll tax. So as payroll income for individuals working here in Leport County, as their annual salary goes up, you're going to be receiving additional LIT funding every year. So just like our police officers in 2024, our town council just approved a 3% raise for 2024 for all of our police staff and actually all of our town employees. So next year, like for myself, my salary overall, 3%, at the same time, what I pay out of my salary, my check, in a few weeks, is going to increase in my local tax.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from Rich or Sam? No? Okay.
Yes, when was the last time we, we become shared?
Three years ago.
Three years.
Yeah. These are every three years, so.
And on a previous contract, we had a 3% increase each of the three years. Last time.
Okay. All right. Okay, so Sam has, not Sam, I'm sorry. Ralph made the suggestion. Thank you very much, Steve. Made the suggestion that we put this to a vote at the last meeting of the year, which will take place later on in December. That date we will determine towards the end of our meeting today.
Do we have a resolution or any that we can vote on?
I know, I think that there is. We do sign some kind of an agreement on it, not just... I mean, we have to sign the contract, you know, for sure. And Joan, do we have an ordinance or a resolution on that? With the police contract? I can't remember now.
I don't have anything on it.
No. I don't remember. I actually don't remember anything except for the contract itself.
The only thing I can mention, any time you want to do something legal with the monies, it's easier to put it in a resolution. It's easier to find. SBOA needs it. We get a records request, DLGF, anybody. It's easier to find it. If it's just listed in a, as a vote in the meeting minutes, guess what you got to do?
True. Okay.
You have to guess.
Right.
You have to.
Okay.
Say, okay, let's see, what, about what time is it? It's a time waster if we don't have it.
Okay. All right.
That doesn't...
Thank you.
No, it doesn't take much to do it.
Okay.
In resolution.
Okay. All right, Joan. Thank you. Okay. So, gentlemen, are you in favor of that we put this off? I think I'll just table. I will say, use my, you know, decision and say, we're going to table the making of the contract to the next meeting that we hold at the end of December. Okay. So that will be tabled, contract approval. That was under nine. That was 9A. So I'm going to just make a note here. Okay? Okay. Let us move on. Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Okay, for the month of November, we only spent 102 hours up here because of the holiday and stuff like that. We just had three meetings during the month. We had 11 calls. I think we had one person call here in town. I believe it was Greenwall. The other one that was, could have been a disaster was that train wreck. We got called up there in Michigan for that train wreck.
Uh-huh.
And that could have been really bad. Thankfully, all the cars stayed on, stayed upright. Thankfully, all the cars stayed on, stayed upright. I think what Bob said, the only two people were injured were the conductor and the engineer, right? Hit the car or whatever. But other than that, it's been slow. We would like to wish everybody happy holidays. Fire Department, be safe. Okay? No fires, please.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, Chief. Let's move on to the Building Commissioner, Court Enforcement Officer, Defta.
I'm giving you a good size.
Wait until, wait until you're ready to...
From the one I sent this morning, one of the citations. So, you can see the building permits issued, six, around the middle, couple of citations, one for a dirt can up on the road. I've been there for over a week, right on Hill Portal, so kind of busy place. And then one for building without a permit. No good update on the 2602 Lake Shore case. We're still waiting to see if the homeowner removes the staircase that the court said they needed to remove. And so that will be early in January is when we'll have to revisit that.
There was a recent penalty on that though, right? There was a recent...
Well, there's a filing that they made, you know, so we're going to be holding off on that, but...
Yeah, and a couple other separate boards that we're still just working on. One's still 305, trying to get them to get their stuff together for the BZA, get bearings. And we noticed a abatement for, to a Portos turnover attorney quite a while ago, I'm not sure what's happening with that now. And 3,700, okay, there has been progress. The homeowner paid their delinquent fees to the town and they paid to get a contractor out there to get a permit. So they have a permit to replace the roof and the skylights.
How much were they going for?
Something over $2,000. That wasn't really, you know, that wasn't my bail week.
A lot. A seller.
Okay.
How long was that account?
Seven years.
Seven years?
Well...
And who could you have?
All right.
We proactively pursue them with...
Yeah, with the permit until...
At what point can we take legal action to collect the fines or, you know?
For town fees, yeah, that's, you know, we have an ordinance that requires the town treasurer to manage collections of that, and so they don't really get involved with that.
Okay.
And if, uh, BZA meeting still scheduled for January 25th, it looks like we'll have a couple of short-term rental applicants at that, and then hopefully we 305 program the balance.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you very much. Any questions to Deb, council members? No? Okay. All right. There is no park board report because the park board has suspended meetings until, I believe, early spring. Our Road Commissioner, Bob Solkowski.
I don't really have a report, I just report that we're ready for the snow.
All right. Okay, ready for snow. All right, thank you very much. Anything from the Advisory Plan Commission?
No, we had a meeting, but there was no permit action, so it was just standard.
Okay. And I understand that the BZA well, has not had a meeting now since their last one, which took place, I believe, in September? And, uh, Sept-, I think it was September. Okay, September, October. So the next one is in January on the 24th, right?
25th.
Oh, 25th, okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, White Dish Drainage Board, at the meeting this morning, it was announced that the Drainage Board has hired someone to do some cleanup on the white dish going from El Portal eastward towards the Michigan border because there are trees, there are some smaller saplings that are already across the creek, there's some other growth that's really too close. So they're going to be doing a cleanup. It's not going to be a huge thing, they are not going to be dredging, but they are going to be cleaning the, um, the greenery. They send someone out here to take a look, you know, because they're responsible for that part. And so they took a look at those and that's what they're going to be doing. So that's, and they did say they were planning on having it done before the end of the year. So they've already contracted with somebody and made a decision that it's, that it's a goal. It's not something for us to decide. They decide because they're responsible for that section of the ditch. Pardon?
Do we fund that?
No, that, well, we fund that as homeowners. The, we all fund it as homeowners here in Michiana Shores. It goes to, to part of our property taxes, yeah. And they are responsible. When we established the walking paths, the responsibility for maintenance of those switched to the town for a period of about 20 years, correct, Joan?
Pardon?
Was the, the maintenance of the ditch that has the walking paths. That came to us, evolved upon us, and it was, I believe, for like a 20-year period. So next year being, because I think it was 2004 when the first portion was done?
When they did the first...
Yes.
2004, 2005.
Yeah, so that...
Ended the agreement for 20 years.
All right, so that will be coming up for discussion with La Porte County's Drainage Board, you know, in the future soon.
The second section is the same way.
Okay, but that was completed later on, that was like...
That's correct.
Right, okay. Now, website, Samantha Arnold, anything on the website itself?
Nope, nothing to report on the website.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you get traffic, you know, people coming, you know, asking?
We do.
Okay.
I haven't pulled, I haven't pulled the numbers for a while, but I can pull those for you.
Okay, cool, that would be interesting to know. Thank you very much. Okay. NERC, NERC meeting was actually very interesting. You know, I attended that last week, so they reported on various, you know, issues, of course, that are, you know, affecting us, the different kind of changes, told us about grants that communities can receive through various different sources, a lot of them having to do with the environment, which means, you know, affecting how we maintain all of our green spaces. They discussed roads and, you know, how the roads were being handled in the state of Indiana, the state, you know, monies that are repairing, which we saw part of that stuff was taking place over there on Highway 212 and 20. You know, we saw, you know, that part. So their next meeting is going to be in January, I will be at that one as well. Okay, let's see. Okay, we move on to unfinished business. And under unfinished business here, we have information on the, um, the emails that we've been using and Samantha, I guess, and other, you know, council members were on a meeting together with some government, are they government reps who are, or their agency that works with them?
Yeah.
Okay, so this, this deals with the email addresses that we use as a town. Thank you very much.
Just, Samantha.
What is it, here's a...
Sam, speak up louder because it's harder to pick up.
I was unable to join the call last time, but Samantha took the initiative and made contact with people that...
Okay.
So I joined Sam, you know?
Do you want me to just kind of summarize this or? Yes, please. Okay.
So I think there was a request to, um, kind of standardize the email addresses for the town so that everyone who, who is involved in town business has an email address of townofmichanashores.in.gov. Right now, different personal Gmail addresses are being used. The state of Indiana has a, has a program through their Indiana Office of Technology Group to support towns, municipalities, and agencies in creating email addresses for their organization. And it's, um, so they have it set up to create that. It's very, very reasonably priced, very reasonably priced, um, for especially small towns, and it's secure, easy to use. And they have a whole very clear process about how you go through and set it up. So I went in and looked, worked with Sam to look through all the documentation and then we had a call with them because you go through a process of, obviously, there's lots of bureaucratic paperwork you fill out to make sure you're the town and who your town president is. And once that's filled out and approved, they have an agency they work with, and then guides you through the process. Takes about 30 days end to end. It can't start till next year. And one additional requirement is if you want to have the email addresses, your domain has, you have to have a town or an Indiana.gov domain, which makes sense. If you're going to have a federal or government email address, they want you to be townofmichanashores.in.gov, which means we would go and switch to that domain and the website would then be able to move on that domain and be consistent as well. And that's part of the process.
Okay.
So we would go through and do that, and then there'd be a, a transition process where we'd move, we'd set everybody up with, um, these email addresses. I think for clerk and things like that, we'd do a transition for documents and things like that. They use Google, it's called Google Workspace for Business. So if you have a Gmail account now, it's the same thing where you have, it looks the same interface, it's Gmail, and it comes with email, the calendar, their Gchat, the contacts, and you get a G Drive, you know, if you guys use Google Drive where you store documents, and you get a terabyte per user with a basic plan. And then you can use their Google Meetings, it's called Google Hangouts, where you do like Zoom meetings, and the basic version can host meetings of up to 250 people at a time. So that is kind of the basics, so I don't know what your, no, I take questions?
One of the nice features you pointed out, it says people change, that you can...
Right.
deactivate a user off of the name. And now it's just...
Yeah, I have to say, I wasn't in favor of this until I had a discussion with Samantha about it. And the thing that stuck out to me is that the management of it.
That's the, yeah.
As Samantha may not be doing our, this stuff in five years, and it's an easier thing to transition to somebody else instead of some schmuck having to figure it out from the top without any documentation.
Right, that's, that is, I mean, a lot of us use Gmail now, so it's the same technology. The technology is secure, you wouldn't be technically gaining that, but what you're gaining is the management aspect so that you have a suite where you say, here's Joan's email, here's Dino's, here's Ralph's, these are the people with authorized email addresses, this is a document that only town people can use, and you have a way to control that. And then, yes, if someone leaves, you've got a way to deny, you know, remove their access or add new access, and it's also tied in with the state, so they also have some, you know, ways to make sure there's always a continuity. You can manage it and you don't have rogue email addresses you have to worry about and things like that.
Okay. Now Joan had mentioned when this all started, Joan's concern was making sure that we have, you know, secure, security, so I must look at this, okay?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm saying, that it uses Google's platform, which is very secure, and then the additional, you gain additional security by having a unified system like we were talking about. That's like, that's the human level of security.
Okay.
I guess you call it.
Okay. So what is needed then? I'm saying, looking here, we can only start next year, so does that mean we get this started, working on it as the year begins?
We can start it now, that's because we have to go in, they have a portal, Indiana has a portal for a lot of things, so you've got to go in and create an account and start throwing out your paperwork. So we can start that now because we got to fill that out. You have to also make sure you have what they call an authorizing official, which would probably be you, and a town council member, and maybe a web admin, I don't know, by qualified, I'll have to see. So you set up like you're a, so one, we set up an account in the portal and dot all our Is and cross all our Ts, and then we make the request that we want to do this, and then requests aren't getting started to fulfill till next year. And the first thing happens is you get the domain, and I'm going to call Josh, going to make sure it works out, but he'll tell us, this is the guy we spoke with. And then they go through and they have, I didn't print it all out, I have a link to it, or another document for you, that lists all the steps they go through. First you do this, boom. It's a checklist, it's pretty straightforward. And then the, the biggest piece of work will, if we want to move people's files over, if we have any of that, that'd be on us, but we can organize a process to, to move emails if people want to move their emails over and things like that.
Okay.
So if we, if, if the council, excuse me, I have a hiccups. If the council approves it, we decide how many users we want, if it's a cost per user per month, and then we would start the process. And I could, we'd probably sit down with you guys and Sam, and we'd start the, the process.
Okay. And to add, should we need it, to add additional users?
We can.
We can, that's no problem. And what about, um, you know, like if we've got a, we don't get penalized or anything if people fall off of our list?
No, you can, if you want to remove a user completely, you can remove a user and then decrease your cost.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, Joan, is this the same kind of information you remember hearing when you were listening to the webinar they had on this?
I was the last or invited to be on that email.
You know, I thought that...
I'll be on that.
You were on it. Oh, you were on the email, I thought.
The email, I meant the...
Pardon?
They didn't send out an invite.
They didn't send out?
They said, they were supposed to send out the invite and they didn't, and then they said they did. I wouldn't call the guy because I had...
That's why I couldn't get on today. I tried to get on one today and they kept kicking me out.
Oh, there was one, there was a webinar today? Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So I called him directly.
Okay, so I kind of get left out of the loop here.
Well, I'm going to do a follow-up call with him, would you like?
We all got the same information today because the rest of us weren't on that meeting either, so we got all the same information, Joan. Okay?
Well, for treasurer, she'll know what's going on.
Well, it is, this is a public meeting and we're all learning about this together.
Let's move on.
And you're the one who brought this up to us anyway, so that was very good.
That was a good idea, but I didn't know that.
It is a good idea.
Yeah.
What do we need to do?
What do you got?
All right.
Want me to start the process?
Well, let's, you know, this is not just my own decision, this is the decision we're talking about here together. One of the big questions I think that would be as well is that, you know, Joan handles the towns, all the towns' documentation and files that are electronic. So those, can, do you have any information on that? Those stay securely with regards to the clerk treasurer's office?
It depends where Joan's storing them now. They, is on your computer or is it in the cloud?
Some of it's in the clouds, some's on the computer.
So I think it would be a, probably, maybe a few of us sit down and with Joan and do an audit of all the materials, where they are and where we want them to be, right? We want, what do we want to be in the cloud? What's on the server? And then we would, we'd have to do a, they don't, they don't, they don't handle any of your migration and documentation. They give you the place to put it.
Yeah.
We would have to create an audit of everything we have and then determine our, our transition plan, our migration plan to move, which we can totally do. And we probably didn't want to probably create a plan going forward of what we want to store or where.
Okay. All right. So that would mean, you know, sitting down and doing a little bit of a workshop and working on all of this kind of stuff, so. All right, so my suggestion would be that we get ourselves together and do this little workshop, so where the council members could be and Joan could be, and then hopefully that you could run this for us, and then we may have access, if we need to, to connect with somebody, you know, from, from the IOT group in order to do this, so.
And they have, if, if, if it becomes that we need more storage space over time, they have bigger levels, the pricing's online, they can look if you need to, but a terabyte, even the town, I think it would take us a bit to get it.
Yeah, so that's a lot, that's a lot of stuff.
Without photo, I mean, I can go through that easy with photos, not with a stack.
Okay, all right. So I think that some of this is going to depend, Joan, on your schedule. I know you have to do all that stuff for the SBOA now, so when you can tell us that you may have some time to work and do a little workshop on this where we can get more information.
I don't know when. You'll have to check back with me in a couple weeks because I don't know when I'm...
Okay.
I'm going to...
All right, so let's aim...
It's going to take...
Okay, so maybe we aim to do this in early January.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, can we go ahead and just say, yes, we're going to do it so we don't have to...
Yes, I think so. Oh, no, I think so, that's what I want to say.
It's getting to where we have to.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so in other words, you're making a motion that we make this transfer to the, using the government email. Okay, all right, okay, great. So we will now be an IN.gov kind of domain for us, so I then, in that case, you know, council members, if there are no other questions or comments, then I need somebody to make a motion.
I move to adopt the IOT services as described by Samantha, the made in email services, and start the process.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have Sam moving, Ralph Fox seconding, you know, to start process of moving email to government domain. of moving email to government domain. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we have four ayes, one is absent and that motion has passed. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we've discussed the police contract. Now what we need to do is determine when we are going to hold the last meeting of the year for the town. Joan, do you have any suggested dates?
I believe that's been set for November 20, I mean, for December 28.
I don't remember discussing it at a meeting, which is why I'm asking.
It was set at the beginning of the year.
Oh, okay.
That's why you don't remember.
Okay. Pardon? Yeah, okay. I do know that, you know, in the past couple of years, we were setting it and discussing it at the end of the, you know, during the meeting, but that is fine with me. Let's take a look. So the 28th is going to be a Thursday. And what time do we have that? Joan, do you want to, I don't know how many are going to be available.
I will not be available.
You, you will not be available that day, okay?
I'll be available.
You will be available, I will be available. I don't know, Mark Rich, December 28th, you're going to be around?
Yeah.
You hope so.
That's a Thursday, it's a Thursday.
What time?
Well, the time we didn't decide.
You can set your time if you want to because I'm pretty sure it's set at seven.
Okay, we're good now. All right, and we'll just check in with Michael. I know he's taking paternity leave too, so, you know, he can even join us via, but he's close by, so that'll be good. Okay, so the 28th and we'll determine the time yet as we're going for it. Is all okay with everyone except for Ralph?
You're not going to give a time tonight?
Well.
Six, seven.
I'm okay at any time then.
Is that an executive meeting or a public meeting?
It's a public meeting. It's for the town council and it is a public meeting.
A year-end meeting.
It's just a year-end meeting.
Right.
To wrap things up for the year. Right, very good. No, it's a public meeting, okay? Joan, it's a Thursday, so you're not working then. The only person who will.
I do though.
I'm sorry?
I work all the time.
I know you work all the time, but I'm saying, but your time, I mean, you're here. We can find you in the office. You're always working here, okay? Do you want an early meeting or do you want a later meeting, gentlemen? What's better for you? Okay, then let's aim for seven o'clock. Everybody will remember that, okay? Seven PM on the 28th. So let's add that to our meeting list down here. December 28th, 7:00 PM. Okay, so I've just added that to our next miscellaneous meeting list down here. Okay, let us go down. Okay, we finished this, set the date for that. There's no attorney report because Brad was not able to join us. Now the miscellaneous business. We had been discussing the refuse fee. Joan informs me that our contract with the refuse company is going to, is it ending as of the end of March or end of February in 2024? You said, Joan?
I believe it's the first of March.
Refuse. The leaf is going to expire too, but Joan had brought up the refuse.
I think we have a three year.
Yeah, the leaf's not going to expire, it just might not be on the calendar.
Which one's not going to expire?
The leaf, we just approved that for a three-year thing.
Yes, we did.
But the refuse will be over.
The refuse.
For three years, sorry?
We approved the refuse, but what year did, I thought that it's, Joan informed me in her note here that our refuse contract, you have that, is that the document you had given me a copy of, right?
Yeah.
Can you pull that? I left mine at home, I don't have it with me. So if you have it, it would be good.
No, they don't expire, they're just on different.
Different fees.
There's a different fee skip, but I just don't remember the expiration date. I mean, I mean, it does end at three years.
It was just called last year, right?
The refuse, no. The leaves, the leaves we did, but not the refuse.
I just joined the council and Michael had finished.
That's the leaves.
Yeah, the leaves.
That's the leaves. Michael?
He did refuse. Remember we had the sealed documents, the bids that came in and the public came in and the others?
It was for the, for the refuse as well? Okay, Joan, then we are sent. You have, it was the document was in that orange envelope. I mean, in the envelope, in your, the yellow envelope? The mailing envelope?
That was an MS4.
Oh, that was the MS4 one? Okay.
Adopt a three-year on it because of rates.
We're still good.
The only, on the refuse, there was a fourth year. Wasn't there that you could take the fourth year?
I think that there were four years. The one, you had me sign the document this afternoon and it wasn't the MS4 document I signed. It was the.
That was for the.
That was for refuse.
Refuge.
Okay.
Refuge, we had three years. We started it in 2023, April.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it now?
No, it will continue.
Okay.
It's going to continue till the 20, year 27.
Okay, so we do not need to worry about anything?
No, because you expect a four year.
Okay, Joan, all right, thank you. So we don't need to worry about that. I misunderstood obviously Joan's notification. So the leaf contract, okay, I spoke with Jason today, you know, about finishing up all the work. He's been sending all his maps of, you know, the work that was completed. In fact, they did extra runs today because there was some people who had forgotten that the, the car, the trucks do rounds in one direction and in the other. And there were still some things out there, but they said they were cleaning up the last and picking up the last of the sticks. So one of the comments Jason had made with regards to that was that there were some sticks out there that were probably 20 feet long and there were branches from trees. So those are not sticks and twigs. So everybody, please be mindful of that, that they don't remove entire bushes for you and things like that. Just small things that you encounter as you are, you know, small, small things. And just as an FYI for everybody in town, if you bundle your sticks and tie them together in bunches that are no longer than four feet, then the refuse company picks all of those up too. So if you're interested in that, you could do it that way. Then also Jason mentioned hoping that he just extended, I think, a contract with Dunland Beach. And he was very amenable to trying to discuss something like that with us, perhaps in the new year to extend a contract with him, if, you know, that is what we would like to do. So I told him that I would mention it at tonight's meeting. Okay, now communications received. We already know that Joan has received some communications with regards to collecting information. And anything else, Ralph, have you received something?
I think we're going to talk about the new fees.
Oh, yes, we do have to, yes. You are right, you are right, okay. The refuse fee, okay. So now let us talk about those refuse fees. I'm glad you reminded, okay. So for the coming years now, but I don't have the document that lists the amounts of money that are going up. Joan, can you give us?
Joan had a meeting with the accountant.
Right.
And they came up with a number 185 dollars.
That's correct.
Yeah, so does that account for the increase for the year in the service?
It does.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is going back to November 21st. I did an email for everyone and worked with Joan to understand what contract prices were and the number of homes within the town. And my total, when you factor in administrative costs, try to encompass as much as what I understood, my calculations came up slightly less than what the 185 recommendation, but it's within $2.10.
Okay.
So it's very, very close and I'm choosing fuzzy estimates.
Okay.
Postage and whatnot.
There's postage there.
Yeah, so, so Susan's recommendation?
Perjury and everything else.
Wasn't taken, no consideration, I mean, considerations for collections.
I think 185 is in the ballpark.
Okay.
And next year it's going to go up to, for our, what we pay, it's $59,794.56.
So will this increase that, you know, that we would have to bill 185 per home, is that going to cover the fee for next year then in that, in that going up? Because it goes up in March, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
So that should do it going forward?
Yeah, I actually, my accountant did the same thing.
Okay.
Two months on the whole contract and 10.
Okay, all right, okay.
And this is refuse only?
Refuge only.
Yeah, refuse only, yep. Okay.
I believe the contract's up this year for the leaf, isn't it? For leaf pickup?
Yes.
In, in, in the spring, I guess, basically.
The spring is the last one.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So we will be negotiating, yes.
On that one, the time comes around.
Yes, which is why I mentioned that Jason is very interested in, in seeing if, you know, we could extend, you know, with the contract. But I said, we'll do that once the attorney is back and we can discuss it, you know, on that point. Okay, so I think we're going to have to be, Joan obviously is going to be responsible for sending the office notice then, you know, with the, you know, and with regards to the raising prices.
Yes, one of the bills going to reflect that. That's really the important thing. When are we going to get the money back that this reflects?
Right, okay.
Well, I mean, you talked about not changing the bills to go out in December.
Right, they go out in December and I think it would probably be wise to do a separate billing for the increase for the year because that would uncover the increase for December.
Right, so the billing, the additional billing that go out would only cover the first six months of the increase. And then the second bill, the bill that goes out next year in June would be the full thing.
That's right, then you can make.
We're sending the original bill, it's going out this week.
Yes, we understand.
So.
And there'll be a notice.
The new fee.
Until we add it in the June billing, May-June billing then.
It'll go in a June bill and based on the $59,000, it may be even more than that.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to account for the entire increase in one installment.
Correct.
That's correct. It's going to have to be $45.
Increase for.
Yes.
$45 for.
I understand.
Okay, all right.
Because we have people here who budget, older people that.
Yes.
Did not have good wage at the time, their pensions are less, so.
Okay, so any more questions on that? We're all good on that part, okay? I wanted a report under this miscellaneous business here, I mean, because I started that under here, is that Global made sure that they took care of all of our street reviews and have registered us with the Purdue LTAP. And we are, they've completed the work on time and the registration took place. Joan, one of their, I think one of their agents that was helping, Joan, upload everything to the state so that we have all of our information registered. So we will now be able to apply for another CCG, you know, grant. So there's going to be two calls for the grants. One is going to be in January and actually it comes pretty early in January. And then the second call will be later on in the summer, July, August, something like that. So we will have to make a determination on when we want to try, you know, to apply for this thing. The June, July, I mean, January 2nd is really close. So I don't know that we would make, you know, get all the paperwork done, you know, for it. I'm not sure what we could do on that.
May not because depending on what streets you choose and the prices of them, because I don't know if I sent the PISA report out or not.
No, none of us got the new report.
Okay, I'll send you the PISA report because as I recall, first for this year, coming year 24, they're talking a million dollars for us. We have to pay 25%. We cannot afford it.
Oh, yeah, we can.
No, they're.
We'll figure out how much money we have.
Yeah.
That we can put into it and then we'll work with the.
Well, you just have to change what streets are being paved.
Oh, yeah.
But the whole thing, right now I can tell you the whole thing is not feasible unless we take.
I think that was only for larger towns, not for us. We're still able to apply for smaller amounts.
You can apply for smaller amounts, but the PISA report that went in. It's dating at this is.
That's right, okay.
We want to do, it's a million. You can change that as much as you want.
Yes.
I'm saying that there's nothing that we're going, I don't know how we can come up with.
Well, we've never tried.
It'll be $250,000.
Yeah, we've never tried to do that. But the point is we had to do this document in order to apply for any kind of a grant.
That is correct.
And we are now able to apply for federal monies as well, not just for state money. Because this was state money we've used before. So at least we've got it done. And I wanted to let you know that Global, they sent us an invoice already for, for the work they did. But most importantly, we are registered, we were there on time and everything is done. We are now able to try to use this money. So my question is, can we try? Joan, you'd have to answer this. Can we try for the January 2nd or should we wait until the summer?
I would wait because I think we're going to have to wait until we get an annual report.
Okay, so that will make it easier.
Annually.
Okay.
Because we.
Yeah, I think that I'm realistically speaking, I think that would be a better idea.
Doing it twice in a year kind of sense.
Yeah.
Reality, it's a lot of work.
It is, it is, there's going to be more work on it, so.
We're going to have the same amount of money whether we break it up into three references or one.
This is true.
Just do one effort and it will.
Well, I don't think you could, even if you break it up in two efforts, you're not going to get $250,000 out of Harvard.
Oh, I'm not saying it.
No, okay. Thank you. All right, good. Okay, so we've made a report over here on this and I think that that covers everything that I had here. Communications received. Council members, any other communications you've received? Nothing, okay. Joan already referred it on her, the request that she had received. I don't have anything specific to add about any kind of documentation. So if we don't have any other communications, I open up to public comment now. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's Dan from Sparrow. My wife, Kathleen, that we're running April again.
Okay.
I'm here to introduce ourselves. My understanding is this is not the time or the place to discuss my formal complaint on the code enforcement officer and the dispute that we have, is my understanding.
The, we are going to listen to anything you would like to say to us. We would not make any kind of a, you know, decision at this point. We would have a meeting together with our attorney before any kind of a decision was made, so that's it. And we will not discuss anything. You will, I'm just explaining the process now. You will speak to us, we will listen and then, you know, we will move forward after that.
I just want to make sure you guys all got my email. And if you didn't, because some people don't have emails, I believe.
Rich, Rich does not use email?
Of my, my.
I believe Joan provided him with that.
I think, I just want to let you know that, you know, we moved into June 1st. We're always going to be compliant. If we made a mistake, we just want the town council to show us. And that's why I requested creative information.[1610.25] And that's why I requested creative information. I want to know where $300 came from for the fine and other incidents that she may be involved in, like complaints or anything like that. That's basically it. You guys have read my my email. I don't have to read it for the public. I didn't bring it with me because my understanding, this was not the time or place to discuss what happened.
Correct.
So if there's anything that we can do for the community, we want to help the community. Chief registers, nurse, I was a police officer for 25 years, retired seven years. So we're always gonna abide the law and, you know, respect your codes. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments. Are there any other public comments today? Nope. How about council comments?
I would like to recognize a member of the community, Mr. Rob Tepperman. Mr. Tepperman, as you guys are aware, had reached out to various groups within the town asking permission to hire a tree service to go in and clear invasive spy invasive species and other dead trees and limbs on a property adjacent to his, which is actually a town in the lot. So we went through the process and gave him the approval and work was completed after the Thanksgiving holiday. And Mr. Tepperman has spent the money out of his own pocket to do that. It helps beautify that area, which is close to, it's a major, major.
For us, it's major.
Machanishro's. Right at the corner of Shadow and where Shadow turns into Meadow and the nature trail. So if you go by there, it's noticeably clear. We'll see how it looks in the summer. There's still still that large pile of tree debris that sits there is was on the tree list that we that you and Bob had created. So I think that would be one that would be regardless of all the other trees that were on private property that probably shouldn't be touched. That's one where I think it makes a lot of sense. It's right at the trail to get on the building and the trail.
Okay.
So we want to thank publicly, thank Mr. Tepperman for his contribution. He's very interested in supporting both physically and financially any other initiatives that the park board or the park booster group might entertain on helping to clear the nature trail of its many invasive species out there, so.
Okay.
So I also want to wish everyone happy holidays and safe and happy times. One thing that came up in the meeting, course of the meeting, we don't need to talk deeply about it, but the collections. I'm surprised to hear that we have gone seven years and someone has not taken further actions. And by good fortune, I guess by good fortune, we were pursuing the nuisance file issue against this person. And so we forced him by coming in and getting a permit in order to have a permit so he could avoid the nuisance consequences. He had a $2,000 fine. How many more are out there? I think the other one on.
And excuse me, it wasn't a fine. It was fees owed for services rendered. They were fees.
Delinquent.
And then with some with some fines added.
Some fines.
Oh, there were some fines in there, weren't there? Small ones, though.
10%.
But.
I don't have any idea what the fines are.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was for services.
I believe on the gentleman on ponte train, the one that you're also pursuing because of the garage, had to come in and was out. Did he have to pay off some delinquent fees?
He got anywhere with that one, sorry to say.
There was someone that I remember telling him it's like $200 and asking. Anyway, so my question, I guess, to the clerk treasurer would be to understand how much is delinquent? Do we know a total? Do we know by individual? And are we doing anything proactively to pursue it other than hoping that they come in?
We have very, very few that's on up.
We have $2,000.
Very few.
That we just collected, the $2,000.
That was one of our largest ones. Most of them.
Can the council get a list of all the delinquents accounted for?
I don't know if that is, how do I want to say? There's certain things we can release and certain things we cannot release. So I will have to check to see if it can be released. It goes the same thing with police reports. They can release part, but they can't release it.
I believe some information can be shared with the elected officials because we've given an oath, but we can check up on that to find out, but it would not be, you know, information that would be shared with the general public, especially not public.
Who and what is.
Because it's the town's money, Joan.
I understand that.
Thank you, Joan. And Joan and Sam.
Raising the stakes.
Okay, we, Joan, thank you. Let's get this down. It is necessary for us. The basic thing is it is necessary for us to follow up on any unpaid services that have been paid because it's money that the town has been using. We are, we won't discuss it and won't argue it here now, but we should find out.
And I'm not arguing. I'm saying we are working on it and we have been working on it. But we aren't gonna hire an attorney to go after someone for $100 or $160.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Thank you.
Where we could make the filings ourselves without the attorney.
There, and thank you. You made a good point too. Thank you, Joan. We also, thank you, Joan. We are done discussing that part now. Okay, it would be very good for us to make sure that any any fines that are owed and do not devolve upon the town to keep paying. So thank you very much for that. I will just follow up on a council comment by injecting good wishes to everybody, okay? Thank you, everybody in the town, everybody in the community who has helped. And I'm speaking to those who are not here today, but may be watching or may hear a recording. Thank you for all the things you've done. Thank you for those who volunteered, who have put in flowers, who have maintained and manicured various different plantings around town. We thank all those who helped with the park and beautifying it and keeping it clean. We thank those who pick up trash along the railroad track, which technically isn't our town, but we pick it up anyway because it makes it look prettier. So thank you so much to everyone in town. We thank the police for the services they do for us. We thank the fire department for taking care of us, okay? Bob, we thank you for taking care of all of our streets, okay? So then the trees and all this kind of stuff. Brenda, thank you very much for the work you do, you know, in helping in the office. Deb, thanks a lot. You have, you know, done an outstanding job for the things that you've got to do here for the town. So that has been out wonderful that you do. We thank Joan for all the hours she puts in. She gets paid for only a fraction of the time that she spends, but she spends an awful lot of time in the town offices, working on things that are for our town. I thank my, our website coordinator, Samantha, who has been helping us out since pretty much since you moved here, so which has been awesome with setting up our website and maintaining our list, sending out emails. All of this is wonderful and so helpful to us. So thank you very much. Thank you very much to the town council members. And if I have fired, forgotten someone, please remind me and I will thank them too. So happy holidays to everybody. Whatever you celebrate, enjoy your little break and we'll see you again next year.